Good evening, everyone. It is 6:33 on November 12th, 2024. We're starting a couple of minutes late due to technical difficulties, but this is the regular meeting of the Northern Lebanon School District. It's it's nice because the voices in my head usually don't sound like me. This is the regular meeting of the Northern Lebanon School District Board of Directors. I call this meeting to order. Director Kreiser. Thank you. Madam Secretary, may I please have a roll call?
Director Bilal.
President.
Director Fowler. Director Klein. Director Kreiser.
President.
Director Moyer.
Here.
Director Murray.
Here.
Director Williams.
Here.
Vice President England. President Nam.
Present.
Seven present, two absent.
Okay, great. Thank you. We do have a quorum, so we can proceed. First item this evening, as always, is the adoption of this evening's agenda, which was published and made public for everyone to review. Assuming everyone has had an opportunity to take a look at this evening's agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight? Okay. Thank you, Director England, and Director Murray is second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda, please indicate with an aye or yes.
Aye, yes.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none. My vote's also yes. The motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to presentations. Dr. Messinger, I'll let you introduce.
Yeah, first, I want to introduce, we have some folks from Nutrition Group. They brought some treats with them. Thank you, thank you. If you're in the audience and you didn't get a treat, feel free to help yourself before you go. If you guys, did you want to speak? You guys want to come up here? Kelly, can you check to make sure that green light's on? Thank you.
Just for those of you in the audience, those are pumpkin pie parfaits and then two kinds of boba drinks. So there's a peach and a strawberry, so you're welcome to try those. All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for giving us a few minutes to introduce ourselves and to share with you the happenings across the cafeteria. My name is Kelly and I stepped into this role as Food Service Director beginning of 2023-2024 school year. So just starting out my second year here. So the first year, elementary was all, you know, under construction and this, and then it was the secondary building. So I've been told next year is going to be a lot easier, so I'm banking on that. But no, so I prepared a short PowerPoint that I thought would be easiest, just to give you an overview of some things that we've been doing in the cafeteria, as well as some catering events that we've been offering. And then at the end, if you have any questions or want to know more, please feel free to ask. So go ahead. First slide. So like I said, with the start of the 2024 school year, was a brand-new cafeteria in our secondary building. So here are some pictures. I don't know, have you all been able to go up to the building and see it?
We just came from there.
Okay, perfect, yeah. So we have it set up, you know, with different stations. So we have our two stations that offer every day our two different hot meals that the students can choose from. And then we have a grill station, which we offer different hot sandwiches, as well as some hot à la carte items, like mozzarella sticks or buffalo bites. And then we have a pizza station, which is by far the most popular, longest lines. And then another one that we were able to get up and running this year is the MTO station, which is made-to-order. So the students are able to design, you know, what they want in terms of wraps or hoagies or whatever. So that's a little bit what it looks like. Can go to the next slide, please. Another new thing we have this year is this little breakfast cart. So we were able to start this service beginning of October. And so what it is, is we have this set up from about 7:00 AM till almost 8:30, so end of first period, beginning of second period. And we have it pretty far from the actual cafeteria. So it's giving students that typically don't want to walk down to the cafeteria, come in late, for whatever reason, it gives them a chance to grab breakfast. And so we have that set up. And as you can see in the second paragraph, just in October, our participation for breakfast pretty much doubled. So we've seen a lot of participation with the breakfast cart. And students seem to be very happy that they can get breakfast now for an hour and a half in the mornings. All right, next slide, please. All right, here's just some pictures of some of the stuff we've been offering. We've got, you know, hot soft pretzels every day. We try to change it up with different fruit offerings. We do jellies, we do whole fruits, fruit salad. Another new thing this year you'll see is the Dippin' Dots. So it's actually not Dippin' Dots that we're offering, but it's the Yo Dots, which is underneath. And those are a new trendy kind of healthy alternative, which is frozen yogurt. But they were super popular when we first got those in. And then we also try to have a variety of parfaits each day, whether they're fruit or kind of like the pumpkin ones that you're trying tonight for the kids to purchase. So here's some more pictures. There's our pizza. We have a brand-new pizza oven this year and try to put out different flavors each day. We always have our cheese and pepperoni, but then we experiment. So last week was a, I think it was a honey, hot honey buffalo pickle pizza. So it was interesting. We had some that loved it and some that didn't. Anyways, next one. All right, and then, so in addition to what we do in the cafeterias, we also have the opportunity to do different catering events. And so this is one that we did in the middle of October for the district, and it was a picnic theme. So we ran it out of the concession stand. Our main offerings were burgers and dogs and the barbecue pork, but then we had a lot of other, just kind of picnic-y foods that we made into little baskets. And so we also had root beer floats, which seemed to be a big hit. All right, next. And then, and next. Every month, the Nutrition Group also works to cater the Take Three for the teacher, by the teacher's meal that happens. And so we change up the menu every month. We give them different choices. But this happens once a month, and it's been fun to work with that group of people and, yeah, just to be able to offer our catering services to them. All right, next. And then another thing we're doing this year, you can hit it one more time, please. Every month, we've been partnering with Valiant Bikes up in the high school building. And so they were looking for a way for students that earn their Valiant dollar, Valiant Bike dollars, to have an opportunity to spend those dollars somewhere. And so we partnered with them. So each month, we do a different bar, kind of. So we did a soft pretzel bar. This week, we're doing a candy bar that's going to be set up. We're doing a Christmas cookie bar. So it's just different things to get the students, again, involved in the cafeteria and give them a chance to spend their biking dollars. All right, so for numbers, I'm going to hand it over to my manager. This is Jim Keller, and he's going to speak a little bit about numbers.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for letting us be here tonight. Just wanted to give you a brief overview on our budgeted numbers. As you can see, it's September. The first column there is where we should be budgeted, and the second column is our actual. So you see, we are down breakfast, lunch. The one area that the account is doing very well at is à la carte. In fact, in September, they were about $137 over per day in à la carte. To break those other two numbers down, ADP, breakfast, we're under about 74 compared to budget per day, and lunch, under about 63 compared to budget per day. And then if we switch gears to October, they had a really great October month. Breakfast skyrocketed. Kelly was talking about the second choice, the second chance breakfast cart. And in fact, from September to October, breakfast increased 25%. That is really big. So we are now 23 meals ahead of budget for breakfast. And we're still 10 under a day for lunch, but, you know, that's, we gained 50 lunches per day compared to the previous month. So I thought that was really great as well. And then à la carte, it just, it just keeps going up and doing really great. We're about $226 over per day in à la carte. So overall, I think as the months continue on and the offerings just keep getting better and better and the selections get wider, we're definitely going to be seeing those budget numbers being reached, so. That's what we got tonight. Any questions?
I just want to thank you. I think you guys have really done some nice things. I, you know, I hear great things about the food court over there at the high school. And, you know, we have, we have some work to do next year in terms of balancing out, so it makes it a little bit easier on you. But the choices have been fantastic, and I agree. Hopefully those numbers continue to go up. But thank you, thank you for being creative with it.
No, I was just going to say, are you seeing, Gary kind of answered the question, but just the, are you seeing some of the lines decrease because you have more options and students can get in different lines?
Yes and no. Like, it's still pretty crowded up there.
Okay.
Especially, so we do, our first lunch period is high school, and then the second lunch is the entire middle school. So that lunch is crazy, I'm not going to lie.
Okay.
Yeah, but we run them, you know, as fast as we can, to the best service. Yeah, we make it work.
Yeah.
And they've gotten a little innovative as well. As Kelly, sometimes if she has free time, she actually has the POS right on an iPad. So she'll go out and do almost like a quick service line.
Okay.
Yeah, just to try to scoot them out of that area.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, thank you so much.
And I'm looking forward to having my dinner so I can have some dessert. That's great, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Announce the November High School Students of the Month are Benjamin Clemmer and Ethan Hughes. This award is sponsored jointly by the Fredericksburg and Jonestown Lions Club. Are either of them here? Nope. November Middle School Student of the Month is Nadia Guth. This award is sponsored by the Northern Lebanon County Rotary Club, and Nadia will be recognized at a future meeting of the Rotary Club. We'll move now to the Student Council. Nathan, step on up.
Hi, everyone. Max couldn't be present today, so I'm here in substitution. I'm Nathan Swank, the current residing president of Student Council. The recent Powderpuff event was a success, bringing together students in a spirited display of teamwork and friendly competition. As we look ahead, preparations are underway for our Class Wars event. This promises to foster collaboration and rivalry among the classes in a fun and engaging way. In addition, we are planning a door decorating competition that will encourage creativity and holiday spirit among classes. This competition aims to transform our school halls into a vibrant showcase of festival designs. To cap off the festivities of the season, we will host a holiday pep rally that includes a volleyball tournament. This will be held during the pep rally on December 14th at 2:00 PM, when teams will compete for their chance to face off against the staff during the pep rally. This is an excellent opportunity for students to showcase their skills and spirit. Finally, the Drama Club recently concluded a successful performance of Death by Chocolate, entertaining audiences with their talent and hard work. We are excited for the upcoming events and look forward to seeing everyone participate and boosting school spirit.
Great. Thank you, Nathan. Any questions, comments?
Say publicly that really appreciate the flexibility and creativity with the fall play, to be doing that in the cafeteria. And I know they're excited, too, about having the new auditorium and being able to perform the musical there. But their flexibility was amazing in terms of how they made, made all that work. And too, I heard great things about the Powderpuff game. I'm glad you guys got that back on and we could get, get people to be able to participate there. So thank you for doing that, too.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, Superintendent's report. Dr. Messinger.
Okay, Dr. Reese is actually at a, another meeting in the district at our Ag Board meeting tonight. So I'm going to do my best to give a quick construction update. We did do a quick tour before the, before the meeting for the board. But for public, in terms of the public, we have taken occupancy of the mat room, or auxiliary gym, which we use both terms. We've now taken occupancy of the bathrooms down by the gym, the locker rooms down there by the high school gym, and also the band room. We will have occupancy, unless there's some unforeseeable problem, by the end of the week for the weight room. The weight room is scheduled to receive the new equipment and then also have a company come and reassemble the old equipment that we continued to use next week. So we will have that set up shortly. Middle school classrooms are under renovation and 200 wing. That schedule may change slightly to allow, there's a discussion right now. It seems to make more sense, while they have it kind of torn apart, to refinish the floor, which was initially scheduled at the very end of the project. But it's harder to do that with people traveling through it. So we have agreed to push back that date to Christmas so they can refinish the floor, so that wing will be completely done other than punch list items, which just makes sense for, for us and for them. There is a long punch list. As the board walked through, you could see that there's a lot of things. They have 180 days to go through those items. As each place is turned over to us, then we create a punch list. It takes several hours of several of us, along with Fidavia and Crabtree, walking through it to accumulate that list. But, but that has been, we do that as each phase is handed over to us. That's the end of my construction report, but I'd like to invite Mrs. Bruce to, there she is, to come and give us an HR update on some of the things that she's been working on.
Good evening, everybody. So I'm actually going to highlight two different things tonight. The first one being a welcome video. So part of my job is the website. And one of the things that we talk about with our school website a lot is trying to make sure things are updated, trying to methodically go through page by page, link by link, looking at what needs change or outdated, things like that. And so we came across some problems with our new student registration. So when families move into the district, our registration is all online. For those of you who are parents in the district, you know that you have to update Gateway and all the things, right? But if you're coming from a place where you're not quite sure how to get started or you're not quite sure, and you're used to, you know, clearly I'm old school because I have my notebook, right? If you're used to filling out forms that way, we really wanted to make sure families felt welcome right from the start. And so I'm going to give a big shout out to the tech team because any crazy idea I have, they say, how can I help? What can I do? And they were fantastic. And so we put this together, and we really wanted to highlight our kids K to 12. And I think we did a good job of that, and I think the kids are great. So please enjoy.
Welcome to Northern Lebanon.
Welcome to Northern Lebanon.
Welcome to Northern Lebanon.
You may need a one more level.
Welcome to Northern Lebanon. We are happy that you are going to be a Viking. It doesn't matter whether you are in.
Kindergarten.
Second grade.
Grade five.
Sixth grade.
Ninth grade.
On second.
Or senior.
We're very welcoming you.
Estamos listos para recibirte.
Our registration process is completely online and you can begin by clicking "bola."
Nuestro proceso de registro es completamente alineado y puede comenzar haciendo clic a continuación.
Your parent are guardian on leave. A photo ID, proof of residency that you live in the district, a birth certificate for every new student, and medical immunization.
Su padre o guardian necesitará cuatro cosas para empezar. Una identificación con foto, prueba de residencia que usted vive en nuestro distrito, un certificado de nacimiento para cada nuevo estudiante y un registro de bancos de ánimos.
That's all you need to begin.
Visit norleban.org/registration to learn more.
And the best part was I never had to get on camera, so. Those kids did a really good job. So if you see any of those kiddos, please give them a high five because I think they, I think they knocked it out of the park. They were a little nervous, but they did a great job. So the second part I want to share is a little bit about, I am the district chairperson for the Celebration Committee. So we have a district Celebration Committee, and it's comprised of teachers and staff members from district office, from elementary, from secondary. We have some secretaries on the committee. We have a business office person. It's kind of all over the place, which is really great because we get a nice cross-section of opinions, right? And so all year long, we've been talking about, how do we celebrate our staff? How do we make sure that our teachers and our paraprofessionals and everybody feels like they belong here? And everybody feels like we want them here and they're welcome? And so we've been having these great conversations, and so I started doing some research. And lucky for me, I found some research that kind of backed up what we were already thinking, which, so one of the things that we started talking about was this Gallup Research Poll that talked about how 45% of people will stay longer in their job when they feel like they're recognized for things. And this research had five distinct pillars of recognition that make something very meaningful. And so two of those, I need my cheat sheet notes here. Two of those were to make sure the recognition is authentic and equitable. Authentic mean really like personalized to the person, not just like a blanket thank you email. And then the second part was equitable, meaning everybody has an equal chance to get that recognition. So something we came up with is we're going to be drawing, starting January 2025, we're going to be drawing five names a month to give that personal recognition. And we're going to be creating these custom posters for them. They're going to hang in their buildings. The idea then is we're going to take some pictures. We're going to do a little social media shout-out every month. But to kick us off, I went ahead and did all of leadership so that we can hang those up in December and get people kind of excited for it. And I realized that I just talked through my slides without using the slides. Tyler, sorry about that. Keep going, click through that one. Next. Yep, okay. So this is an example. This is Dr. Messinger's. You will notice that Gary likes steak. That's his favorite food. You can take a little look at that. But I'm going to pass these out so that everybody can kind of see what we're talking about. These are just examples of what everybody. And you can feel free to leave up here and pass around, and then I can collect them at the very end. Yep, so, perfect. So I was very lucky that the Celebration Committee, I have three volunteers who are going to kind of help me with this. They're going to draw names, they're going to communicate with their building. So this is not all just coming from district office. This truly is a joint event with some teachers. So Heather Brubaker is one of the sixth-grade teachers. She volunteered for elementary. Taylor Norenhold, which is great because she's a second-year teacher, young teacher. She volunteered to do it for secondary. And then Mrs. Hoak, who everybody knows who sits out front, volunteered to do it for district office. So every month, you're going to start seeing some personalized things popping up in buildings. We're going to do some social media shout-outs for people. And then it's just going to grow and grow. So it's going to take us a couple of years to get through everybody because we have, you know, over 250 staff members. But our intent is to recognize every single person individually over this like multi-year kind of celebration campaign. So we're excited to kick off in January, and posters are going to start getting hung up next month.
Right.
Fantastic.
Who picked the music for the welcome video?
Kyle, actually. Yeah.
That's pretty good.
Oh, actually, I think I have that slide in here. Okay, yep. You may have seen this actually on our social media. This might have been last week. So one thing that Dr. Messinger and I have been trying to do, especially for our first-year brand-new teachers, is on the first day of the second marking period, we go around, we give out water bottles, we say, you know, great job, keep going, stay hydrated. We're proud of you. We're glad you're here. And so, you know, there's Gary taking pictures with everybody. But it's been a really great way for us with our first-year teachers to connect with them. We didn't do elementary yet because the trimester doesn't close until November 22nd, but that's on our calendar for the next, next week. Yep. Thank you. Sorry about that. Forgot that slide.
Yeah, I felt very welcomed by the music. I just wanted, because that sounds like music that would have been when I was in kindergarten. Yeah, great. Thank you.
I will tell Kyle the music.
Okay, Ms. Martin.
Just a real quick update from the business office. We are wrapping up with our auditors, and we are expecting to have the final financial reports in the next week or two. And I intend to have them come in January to give you all the annual report like they always do. And when you're looking over the reports this month, I did just want to point out something on the expenses. First of all, we are finally getting a little relief in our healthcare expense. So we've had two, you know, normal months there. So it doesn't feel like it's quite as stressful as it was last year. And then the other one is, we have not yet been billed from our new busing contractor, so the expenses look a little light. I just want everyone to keep that in mind, that we still have to pay for two, two and a half months of transportation and fuel that we haven't been invoiced for. But we are working with them and going over some things on that, and we will have those invoices paid soon. That's it for us. Thanks. Do there any questions?
Thank you. I just want to mention, thanks for, I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to let some other people talk, and that was a good job. Just real quickly, next month, we have one meeting probably. The other one is, if needed, I don't anticipate needing it at this point, although please keep that date for a budget workshop if we don't need the meeting. What I will say, though, is remember that we will start at 5:30 next time, in December. We start at 5:30 for the reorganization meeting. We do the reorganization meeting, and then the regular meeting followed right after that, which is anywhere between 6:00 and 6:15 usually. So it starts a little bit earlier because of reorganization next. So a couple of things leading up to that that you should be aware of. There are several positions that you may nominate for or volunteer for. One of the things we need a volunteer for, and I can check with Director Klein or we can just tell him because he wasn't here, he's going to do it again. At the very beginning, we assign a temporary president who runs the election part of the meeting. Someone who's not interested in being president or vice president or president. Dave has served in that capacity a couple of years now, multiple years now, because he doesn't have an interest in being president. I'm sure he'd be willing to do it again, assuming he will be here that night. But if anyone else would like to do that, it's not that hard, but you preside over the meeting as we are doing the electing of the new president. Which brings me to the second part. If you would like to nominate someone for president or vice president, please send those nominations through email to Mrs. Hartman. She will accumulate, accumulate that list for the night, the night of the reorg. You may also nominate someone on that night. And we will open it up to see, we will, we will share who's been nominated at that point. And then we will also open it up if anyone else wants to nominate someone. So it's not the end of the world if you forget. But it helps a little bit at the beginning if we, if we have at least some idea of who's been nominated for that to get us started so that we're not sitting here with no nominations because nobody wants to do it. So it's always nice to know we at least have someone who's willing to do it. If you're going to nominate, please check with them to make sure they're willing to, to serve in that capacity, okay? But it's simple as emailing Mrs. Hartman with that name. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, great. So again, reorganization is at 5:30. Just make sure we're all here for them. Okay, any other questions for Dr. Messinger from his report? Okay, hearing none, then we'll move to public comment portion of this evening's meeting. Interested persons were asked to complete a written request to address the board prior to the meeting this evening. I understand that we do have two individuals that have signed up for public comment. I'm just going to be reading from our policy regarding public participation in board meetings. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and must preface their comments by an announcement of their name and group affiliation if, if applicable. Just to note, you don't have to state your address. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to four minutes duration. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, that's me. No participant may address or question school directors individually. And just so that you know, I will let you know when you have 30 seconds left just as a courtesy, so that you can manage your time well. The first one that we have is Barb Mack. Ms. Mack?
My name's Barb Mack. I live at 42 Main Street, Nono. I'm a parent, grandparent of three children. I just wanted to make yous aware that there is a problem with varsity jackets. My granddaughter ordered, we ordered her varsity jacketed back in February. I only received it the beginning of this month. Why is this takes so long? Why is this takes so long? Somebody needs to investigate this. These jackets are very costly. My granddaughter was looking forward to having it last, before the end of the school year. And then we got, so I kind of got stonewalled by different, by the athletic director, his secretary, by the gentleman that was in charge, Bob Beishore. I got the runaround, and I didn't appreciate that. I was ready to go to the district justice office and file a complaint against the school district because I paid for this jacket. That's a lot of money for these jackets. It's not a cheap thing. Something needs to be investigated, something needs to, I'm sure I'm not the only parent, grandparent. I don't know of any other children. I do know of one, she's here tonight, and she kind of felt too that she got the runaround. Nobody was very forthcoming, just, you know, give me a straight answer, don't give me the runaround. I don't appreciate that, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Okay, second public comment this evening is Ginger Troxel.
Good evening, my name is Ginger Troxel, I live at 19 Wolfland in Grantville. I am the mother of a student, a homeowner, and taxpayer, and for anyone who doesn't know, I'm a Northern Lebanon school bus driver. This is my 12th year of being a school bus driver. In the last 11 years, I've been allowed to drive my bus home during the day between my runs. This made things convenient in case of an emergency or unexpected early dismissal. This year, under the new regime Christ Transportation, I have been told I'm no longer allowed to do this because the school says I live too far away due to fuel costs. This is a huge hardship for me, hardship costing me time and money, having to go to Lebanon to get my bus in the afternoons every day. As it stands now, heaven forbid we'd have an emergency because instead of being only 20 minutes away, I'm at least 45 minutes away to get my bus and get over to the school. Now let me bring up the fact that there are two elementary children that have been being transported from Palmyra to Northern Lebanon for the last four years, simply because the mother claims they're homeless. The children are not special needs, they are living with grandparents in Palmyra. There is another student that has been being transported from Camp Hill for two years because the parents are claiming homelessness. I could understand maybe transporting them for a month or two, but for over four years, how long are we going to continue to allow these students to be transported at our expense simply because the parents claim they're homeless? Why isn't there a limit of time and miles out of the district a student is allowed to be transported under the homelessness label? I was also recently made aware, two other students that moved to Tremont and now are being transported because the parents simply want them to finish out their year here. Who is paying for that transportation cost and why are they allowed to continue to attend N L just because they want to? The parents made the choice to move away. If they want to attend this school, they should at least be providing their own transportation, if not paying cost and tuition. Ultimately, my tax dollars are paying for transportation for students that have no business in our school, but myself, who does live in the district, am not allowed to take my bus home daily supposedly due to fuel costs. The money you are spending on just these students I mentioned has to far outweigh the cost of fuel to Grantville. I would like to respectfully request that you revisit this policy allowing bus drivers to take our buses home between our runs as long as we live inside the district. And also, these students should be investigated that are reaping the benefit of attending N L but contributing nothing in return via taxes or otherwise. One last thing on a different topic, I recently contacted the other Lebanon County schools to inquire about their parking permit fees. Lebanon does not charge a fee, Ambocleona and Elko are $20, Palmyra's $25, Cedar Crest is $30. Why does it cost $40 for students to get a parking permit at Northern Lebanon, and what is the money used for? $40 is ridiculously high compared to the rest of Lebanon County. I would ask that you please reconsider this amount and stop punishing the taxpayers and students that financially support this school while rewarding people outside the district that continue to abuse a flawed system. I just want to take my bus home, that's all I want, and I don't want to have to pay $40 for my son who only drives occasionally to school, okay? That's what I'm here tonight for. I would appreciate if you'd consider that, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. As is our policy, we don't respond to public comment, but we will take your comments under advisement. Thank you very much, appreciate it. So at this point, we will move to items for board action. Should be noted that public notice was given for this meeting in accordance with Act 84 of 1986. By notice of the president, the following action requires a voice vote. All votes in favor shall be stated with an "aye" or "yes", and all votes opposed shall be stated with a "nay" or "no". All members abstaining shall state "I abstain" when prompted. The votes will be recorded in the minutes as unanimous roll call vote unless there are any votes in opposition or abstention. If necessary, the president may subsequently call for a roll call vote to be recorded in the minutes. The first item for public action this evening is for the board to approve the consent items that are listed in Item 7 of the agenda, that is Items 7.1 through 7.10. These were the items that were discussed in committee meeting last week. So the first action is to approve those items. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda this evening?
Motion to approve.
Great, thank you Director Blau, is there a second?
Second.
Great, thank you Director Kreiser, is there any discussion regarding the consent items for the agenda? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving Items 7.1 through 7.10 as the consent agenda for this evening, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes".
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also yes, so the motion carries unanimously, the consent agenda is approved. Okay, we will move then to the items for discussion this evening, Dr. Messinger.
Yes, these two items were both talked about last week as well. However, in case there are questions, we moved them to discussion. I do want to clarify, because sometimes we do things over and over and over again, and I know, you know, what's natural to us, maybe there's not enough background. The career planner, I did not explain this last year, although I went through all the changes. The career planner is what our kids will use to select their classes for next year. And I don't think I actually said that, so in case you were wondering what that was, I just wanted to clarify that there's no changes from last week to this week. Again, the big things were the ability to have more choice with the electives. Some changes in terms of state requirements, for instance, the independent living will now be financial literacy to meet the state mandate for that. Things like the algebra class that will be split up into a more proactive approach of Algebra I being split over two years for those kids who struggle with math or feel more comfortable doing it that way. Those, and then anything else I mentioned at the time in terms of new classes. I did get a good question, a couple of them will say pending board approval. Those are curriculum documents that will come before you after our curricular days, which are in December and January, so those curriculum documents are being worked on now, and they will need to be approved by the board before we would run those classes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding the career planner? Did you cover, you covered both?
No, do you want me to do the policies?
No, 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 we'll do 8.1. Any questions regarding what Dr. Messinger just spelled out?
Just one quick question, when does the, when do the students start scheduling? When does this become active for them to choose classes?
They will go into classrooms and go over the career planner with the kids in December. And then January, February-ish, they start to schedule classes.
Hey, great, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve Item 8.1?
Motion to approve 8.1.
Great, thank you Director Murray, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Director Blau, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving 8.1, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes".
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, my vote is also yes, so that motion carries unanimously. And then we'll go to 8.2, this is the policy.
Yeah, again, no changes to the policy, same ones we talked about last week. There was one addition to this, and it's Policy 911. 901, if you remember, we talked about the reason for the change with 901 was we combined 901 and 911, but because we combined that, we no longer need 911. So we are recommending to retire 911 as well as 919. Mrs. Hartman had sent you the PSBA explanation as to why 919 was also retiring.
Okay, any questions regarding the policy? Okay, if not, is there a motion to approve 9.2, I'm sorry, 8.2?
Motion to approve 8.2.
Thank you Director Blau, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Director Kreiser, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of approving Item 9.2, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes".
Yes.
Any opposed? Hearing none, my vote is also yes, so that motion also approves unanimously. That is the entirety of the discussion items for this evening. We'll move to reports, the first is CTC. Director Klein is not here, Director Moyer, do you have anything to?
I was not present.
Okay, great, then we will table that until the December meeting, and we'll get a report then. We'll move to IU 13, Director Marie.
I do not have any additional reports.
Okay, great, thank you. Legislative liaison, Director Kreiser?
Not a whole lot going on because it was election season, so nothing too exciting other than, of course, the outcome of the presidential election. And I think everyone's kind of interested to see how that will affect education.
And I was just on a call today, and I know that the General Assembly is busy trying to figure out who's going to fill what positions at this point, so there's a lot to be done yet. PSBA, I know that we have a report from Director Blau, and I know that Director Williams, you had something to share as well in this regard.
The PSBA Delegate Assembly was held on November 2nd. At this assembly, the delegate assembly, it reviewed and ultimately approved the PSBA Platform Committee, the Legislative Platform for 2025, 2026. I'll just quickly read the four main goals for the legis, or the four main legislative priorities. The first one is that PSBA believes that the state must provide a significant and continued financial investment for school districts that is distributed using a fair and equitable funding system that provides districts with the greatest flexibility to use their resources. Number two, PSBA believes that the state must enact comprehensive and meaningful charter school reforms that reduce the financial burden on school districts and require the same high standards of academic performance and accountability. Number three, PSBA believes that the state must prioritize the mental health needs of students by providing schools with a permanent funding stream and assistance for such purposes, as well as flexible options that best meet the needs of their students and communities. And number four, PSBA believes that the state must continue to invest in school safety, school safety improvements by providing schools with flexible, locally controlled, and permanent funding streams to assist schools meeting the needs of their students and communities. So those are the main four legislative priorities for 2025, 2026.
Great, great report. Is that, to your knowledge, is that something new for PSBA to set a handful of specific priorities? Because in the past, they've had 19, 20 different platforms. But I'm encouraged to know that there's four that they're focusing on.
I don't know, but these are the four that were discussed at length at the delegate assembly, so.
Good, thank you, appreciate the report. Any questions? Okay, Director Blau, did you have anything to add? Okay, all right, Change Order Committee, we did not have a change order meeting, so there is nothing there to report that I'm aware of. Well, we did, I apologize, we do have a few listed. I know that Director Fowler's not here. Director Kreiser, are you prepared to discuss those changes?
Those are not, oh, wait, there's one, there's a couple that are in there. But I thought we talked about those already, yeah. I don't think there's anything new that we did at the Change Order Committee.
Okay. Okay, that's it then. Information, again, dates to remember. Remember, the reorganization meeting is 5:30 at our scheduled time for our initial meeting. And then please hold the second date in December for a potential budget workshop for the board, okay? Any questions at all regarding any of that? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? Thank you Director England, is there a second? Thank you Director Murray, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of adjourning this meeting, please indicate with an "aye" or "yes".
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none, motion carries unanimously, this meeting is adjourned.